Just the, the meeting checklist for the right to know law and discuss ways for public participation in public to provide input during this meeting. And just very quickly, just in summary, we are holding this meeting in accordance with the governor's executive order number 12 for executive order 2020 dash 04 that we are authorized to meet electronically. And there is no physical location, but we are providing public access through Zoom and through a phone number, which is 1312 626 6799. And the access information is available at www.gbshox.org. And we provide the public notice necessary for this information for accessing the meeting at that website. We do have a mechanism for the public to alert us if you're not able to access the meeting and you can call 603 863 9689. And if anyone is not able to access this meeting and lets us know that there are issues connecting, we will adjourn the meeting and reschedule it. All of our votes that are taken during this meeting will be done through a roll call. And we will provide an opportunity at the start of the meeting for designated public participation, which is something that we typically have at our meetings. And depending on how the conversation and what the, uh, the public participation is like, we may also add an additional, I think we will, as we approve the agenda, we'll add an additional public participation option, opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. So folks that are here watching in public, in the public, you can feel free to utilize the Q and A feature. If you click at the top of the Zoom meeting, there should be a Q and A box there. You're welcome to utilize that for providing any questions that you have. There is also a chat and we'll be keeping our eye on those things for you to be able to send questions. And then you can also email questions if you have those. Sydney, should they email you if there are email questions?
Sure. Yep.
Okay. And so we'll address those and we will, like I said, we'll provide an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting and then we're going to approve our agenda here and we'll provide another opportunity as well later on in the meeting. So the first thing is we are going to look at and approve the agenda for tonight. And so we do have our agenda and this was post, is posted on the GBS website. So folks that are watching can find it available there. Are there any?
Pull it up now also.
Oh, excellent.
We'll just share it.
Perfect. Okay. So here's our agenda, excuse me. And I would like to just amend it to add another public participation before we adjourn the meeting. Are there any other changes or additions that folks from the board or Sydney would like us to make? Okay. Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Okay, we have Jody.
Second.
And a second from Christine. And then we will roll call all of our votes. So Denise.
Hi.
Christine.
Hi.
Jody.
Hi.
Leslie.
Hi.
And Brittany, I, and the agenda as amended is approved. Okay. So our first item on our agenda is this public participation. So we'll leave a few minutes right now if folks that are watching would like to either use the Q and A, the chat or email.
Just to be in this room, Barrett.
Feel free. Sorry. Feel free to let us know. And I'm just looking to see here. Okay. And it looks like right now, at least we don't have any call in participants. So we'll just be looking at that Q and A and chat feature for any questions that folks might have right now for public participation. I always feel like I have to leave a few extra seconds for this because typing, not just, not just like raising your hand, typing. Okay. So I don't see anything coming in, but we will have another opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. So our first agenda item is the principal transition and our discussion and action. And this is the first time the board has been together that we've had Heather in front of us to say that we definitely had our, well, and we have our statement, so I don't have to just like make it up and risk bumbling my way through this. And hopefully folks know that, you know, we shared this out after the board. Very regretfully accepted Heather's resignation and, but our message that we just want to continue to express is that we would like to express our heartfelt gratitude to Heather Cantagallo for her service to the students, families and community of Grantham. We did accept her resignation with regret and appreciation, and we know her imprint will remain on our community long into the future. While we will miss her expertise, passion and commitment to education, we wish her all the best in her next role. She has helped the GBS community grow and spread our wings in so many ways. And we know she will soar into her next adventure with the spirit of a lifelong hawk. So thank you, Mrs. Cantagallo. And so we wanted to just our, our first, um, you know, part of having this, this update in this discussion is to again, just reiterate and recognize the work that Heather has done and what she's brought to GBS and how much we all appreciate it and how missed she will be.
Thank you for those kind words. I really appreciate it. I'm definitely going to miss my little hawks.
And what a strange, you know, way to, to all be seeing each other and to be saying goodbye. So hopefully we will find a time when you folks can see each other again off screen to be able to express our, our thanks and, and send you off, not just off of a screen. When we all.
Irish goodbye. I'm pretty good at those.
Disappearing.
Yeah, there are going to be a lot of parties when we finally get together.
Um, and I just wanted to give a, a brief update from the board and then Sydney as well can share, you know, if there's any other details that I've missed or that I've managed to, to speak in a silly way about. But the board is moving forward at this point with our plan to find an interim principal. We feel that at this point, um, you know, where we are just in terms of as a school, but also in terms of the unknown future of what things are going to look like next year. We really think it's in our best interest to move forward with finding, filling an interim role for the next year. And then in the late fall and early into 2021, we will start the full search process for the, the principal position. And the board has kind of made some additional steps with the help of Sydney to put forward some of those first plans in place. And we do have a direction that we are anticipating that we'll head. We don't have a lot of details that we can share about that right now, but we know that there is some anxiety around this transition in the community. And we want to make sure that folks know that we're doing what we can to make this decision in a thoughtful way, but also in a timely way to make sure that we're not extending this or delaying the decision any longer or farther than we have to, so that everyone can move into summer plans, knowing what direction we are heading. And so we're certainly putting a lot of time, effort and thought into it, but we're making sure to move this process forward as quickly as we can. So in the coming weeks, there will certainly be more information shared as we, as we make those final decisions.
Okay. I don't think I need to add anything. That's pretty much it. We can, I think we can provide assurance that GBS is going to make sure that this is a stable transition and that we're going to do the, whatever's in the best interest of the community right now to keep everything moving forward. And, and given, given sort of our current timeline, you know, we have some plans in place that where we know we can make that work.
Yep. Okay. And we will certainly, I will, you know, I'll say while we do have, I'm going to use every opportunity I have in the next few months when I, we have public in front of us to say, you know, as we do move forward into the fall and the late fall, we're really going to be seeking a lot of community input and help as we move into that decision-making process for hiring, you know, a permanent position down the road. And so, you know, as folks within the community are thinking about that next step for us, we're certainly going to have opportunities for folks to be involved in that process, either through feedback, you know, or more official roles as we make those plans. Because it's certainly, it's a decision that impacts the community and so it should involve the community. Okay. Um, and at this point, the board does not have action that we are taking here publicly yet on that position, but we wanted to just let everybody know where we are in the process. So our next agenda item, oh, I should say, is anything else from any of the other board members? Any other things you wanted to share at this point for the principal transition? Okay. All right. So our next agenda item is the food transfer estimate, moving from very interesting to less interesting, also important, very important.
Food is important.
It's, it's very important, especially now.
Absolutely.
So it's just an estimate at this point. So of course we won't ask you to make the official transfer until after our audit and we'll ask for that in July, but we're estimating the food service transfer to be approximately $18,000 this year, which is under the expected and budgeted 23,500, much as that is due to, you know, COVID and what's happened with the fact that we don't have lunches in schools anymore. And on, in addition, the number is lower than we expected because originally we didn't qualify for all of the waivers that schools were getting to be able to request reimbursement. But what wound up happening is that as the waivers continued and as the situation continued, all of New Hampshire qualified as a state for everything. So we wound up getting reimbursement for the lunches that we were serving to seven through 12 students too. So that really helped out a lot. And while we're talking about food, before we go on to the next one, there are two programs that we're going to look into to make sure that our free and reduced lunch families are continuing to receive food over the summer. There is a, we have the option of doing basically Hanaford cards and some gas cards to get to and from the grocery store. But there's a new program that we're looking into that I think is really intriguing and it could be the best option for us to go with. And it's called the P E B D EBT card. So it's called a pandemic debit card. And what it is, is it gives families per number of kids, the same equivalent in, on the debit card of breakfast and lunch for school, and then families can use that. And I think, and then all the tracking is done through that system, connecting to the larger food service system. So I really think that that would be the better way to go. I just received that information about it today, so I'm going to need a little more time to see that we meet all the criteria for it.
Is that, is that a federal program or is?
It's a federal program. Yep. Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Yes.
And that's it.
Any other questions or discussions from the board for the food service?
Um, Sydney, would this be starting like next week?
So we have a waiver to continue serving through June 30th.
Okay.
And so we're already all set to do that. So this would actually be a seamless program where they could start the EBT program that first week in July.
Perfect.
And then we don't have to have food prep people working through the summer. Yeah.
Yep. And the van delivery and everything, but our families are still getting everything they need.
Good solution.
Even though we love the van delivery.
We do.
All right. Okay. So our next agenda item is the Title IX guidance report or summary that's in the board packet. And this is just a discussion item, correct?
It's just discussion at this point, but I really wanted to bring some awareness to this because these Title IX changes are significant. They're, they're very significant. And the, besides the, the concern with some of the changes in the legalities, we are expected to be in compliance with absolutely no extensions granted by August 14th. It's coming up on us very quickly. So I have signed up for a webinar that Drummond Woodsam, our attorneys are putting on next Wednesday to be able to kind of learn the initial stages. But for this, it means changes in policies, procedures and training. And that's going to be very difficult for us to do by August 14th with everything else that's going on and with so little notice to be in compliance. So I will keep you updated on these. And obviously I think as many of you have, there are some concerns about how this will change our practice in schools.
I find this very difficult to read and a couple of things, I'd like, the first bullet, I read it like five times. I still don't understand what it's saying. And then there's this thing about prohibiting a district from investigating online sexual harassment.
Yes.
Makes no sense. What if a student used, you know, uh, the class webpage to bully somebody?
Right.
You'd have to investigate it. I don't get it.
Yeah, it's very complex and, and to be honest, very disappointing to me that.
Yeah.
These are the kind of regulations we're supposed to be living by. And in addition, the, yeah, the online stuff is very difficult. I also think it's going to be very difficult that we're not allowed to offer informal processes unless a formal complaint has been lodged. That's going to be very difficult for somebody filing a complaint, you know, it's, that's extra hard on, and a burden on victims. And, and just the, the, the big change between actual knowledge versus, you know, the reasonable suspicion is a big thing.
Sydney, is there a place that we can learn more about this as board members? I mean, it's, I'm sure it's a lengthy document, but I have so many questions about a lot of this.
You know, um, they might bring some of that up at the webinar next Wednesday, so I'll keep you posted because I know that they're planning other ones down the road and other training things. So I'll, I'll do that. I'll see what I find out from the webinar, but I'll also reach out to Barrett Christina to see if the School Board Association is planning on doing something about this because they may already have something in process.
Thank you. I mean, my biggest concern too are, you know, how does this best serve our children? And how does it protect the victims? And I just don't feel like it's, it's set up to do exactly what it's supposed to do.
Sydney, can I ask where this document that you shared with us came from?
That's my question too. This one came from NHSAA.
Okay.
But it says it, it quotes media sources. Do we know what those media sources were?
I don't know. They're at the bottom. The links to what the media sources were at the bottom. So there was a, a, um, inside higher ed article, a Vox article, an Edweek.org article. So.
Yeah, it's a compilation of them.
Yep. Yeah. Do we know if this is all factual?
It is factual.
All of them?
Yeah.
Yes.
Everything.
It's already been, it's already in place.
Yes.
Passed through.
Yes.
We all have to comply by this.
Yes.
By August 14th. Yeah.
And, and do we know how long this is going to be in effect till other policies change elsewhere or?
Wait for November.
Yeah. This, it, this is frightening.
So this is thanks to Betsy DeVos.
Yes.
She was one of the leaders of the.
Yeah, I remember reading about it and at the time I read about it, it didn't hit me that it affects our schools. Our kids.
And it goes all the way through higher ed and the, the implications for college are terrifying.
Yeah, you must be hearing a lot about this, Leslie.
I'm saturated with what's happened. Yeah. Because Dartmouth has tried really hard to make strides and this is a huge setback.
Yeah.
And what does this affect for us in terms, is this linked to funding for us? Is that the main pressure point for us?
It could be. Yeah. I mean, usually when you sign off on federal assurances, you know, they'll say these are all, you have to abide by all federal laws. So that would be the, that would be the big hook.
Yep. Okay. And so we will start seeing in the next couple of months, we'll start seeing policy changes come through.
Yeah. Policy changes, you'll see things coming up in the handbooks when they go for approval in August because we have to have some handbook changes. And then I'll keep you informed about the kind of trainings that we're going to need to do at the school level.
Will there be some available for board level as well?
Yeah, I'll check with Barrett about that. So hopefully they do have something in the works for this.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for the Title IX guidance discussion? Okay. Okay. So our next item is the summer extended school year fall update. And those are all, we have those three all smushed together, but they are each their big own thing. And this is just a discussion item. And so Sydney, it would be great if you can kind of give us an update on each one of those pieces.
Sure. And I'll hand it over to Heather too for parts of it. So we've decided, you know, our ESY, our summer programming is going to look very different than it has in years past. So we used to do about a four week program for students who were identified with special needs or some specific 504 issues. We decided early on that with, given remote learning, that we wanted to cast a wider net. So we went through a process of having teachers identify students who might benefit from continuous summer programs for skills for, you know, they might just need social emotional check-ins. They might be kids that we could be concerned about, you know, doing okay over the summer and also still some special need services that are happening. So it's, it's a combination of all those, but we were able to, I think Heather, we have about 50 to 60 kids identified right now.
Yeah, about 80.
Yep. And we've moved the program from four weeks to 10 weeks. So we're going to be able to kind of stay with these students for a longer period of time. And it will be a different kind of check-in. Uh, there's, there's no question about that. But, but we really feel that given our certain, our specific circumstances, that having this ability to reach more students and connect with more students over the summer was the right way to go. And Heather, I don't know if you want to add any more specifics about it.
I would just add that we also increased the numbers of staff who are working in this program. And there are specific staff members who are working to do just the one time a week check-in and they work with more, a larger number of students than the people who are doing the small group tutorials or individualized tutorials. And what we are doing next week is meeting with each grade level set of teaching team and coming up with very specific goals for the kids so that the goal is to just maintain what we've gotten. We're not focusing on trying to push kids way ahead. It's just, we just don't want to have the, the summer loss that often happens. And this casting a wider net is helping us to really just stay in touch with as many kids as we can.
Have you gotten feedback from parents?
Yeah. So last night about 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, the letters went out and via email with a registration form. And I've already gotten 18 families have registered their kids. And I have a few emails I just got tonight of some parents I'm going to follow up with who just have some general questions. But it, it's getting some really positive response so far.
Good.
And in addition to that, part of what will happen over the summer is Chris, Chris Widman is going to be not doing lunch bunches, but she's going to be doing Breakfast Club with students over the whole summer just to make sure that she continues to stay in touch with our kids and make sure that they're okay. So we're really thankful for her doing that. The kids are very excited about that.
Is there consideration or discussion about presently this is online, but could it transition to in-person through the summer?
I don't think we're thinking it will. You know, I think we had to make the difficult decision to just whether we're going to go remote or whether we're going to wait to see if we can do any in-person things. And the guidance from the state was very late in coming out and their guidance wound up being no different than the guidance has been the, all the way along for serving special needs students. So we just had to make a decision that this will be remote. And I, I think changing midstream in the summer would be too difficult for everybody because we also don't have the parameters set in place for how we would come back in the building yet.
Yeah. Madeline and I had, before we knew that we didn't have the guidance that we were looking for, we, we started by planning two different programs, one onsite and one virtual. So we, we kind of had two plans, but we never ever planned to shift partway through. We, we had no plan for that. And we definitely had, uh, there was, there were different kids we would have invited for onsite versus distance because for some kids, the distance works really well and for some kids it doesn't. So, you know, we really designed the program around who was best suited for, with the distance learning model.
And that can lead us into the fall, which is the biggest unknown of all. And I know that the, I'm trying to stay on top of the task force work and their various committees. And I know that they're thinking a lot about what the fall might look like. And they're tackling, tackling a lot of issues on that task force, but we do not have, we have absolutely no idea about whether we're coming back in the fall or not. And I, I believe that the task force is probably going to do some great work about setting up some guidelines for how we come back in the building. But I don't think that decision will be made until late August, when we actually see what's happened with the virus over the summer. I still have to believe that the governor is going to make executive decisions based on health first, you know? And if we find that we have a spike in the virus over the summer, which is a real concern right now because restrictions have loosened up, you know, that we have to take that into consideration and, and not make any decisions about the fall until then.
You're saying late August. That's pretty late.
I would, I, I would guess, I would hope by mid-August, but I don't know. I really don't know. And you know, what they're, the message that we're getting is that we should plan for both.
Elizabeth had a question in the chat. And so Elizabeth, originally that's what we were looking at, was trying to do a late August, you know, and towards the second half of the summer, uh, four weeks right before school started. But the lack of guidance about whether we'd even be able to get back in the building or not made it really tricky to try to create that program because it could have just gotten canceled and then kids would have, we would have been scrambling to try to put something together. So it felt like the best choice for our kids was to get a, get a program rolling, distance learning, and have it spread out over the summer.
Yeah. And over the entire summer too, so that the kids really only miss, I think, one, there's one week, the 8th to the 12th where they're, they don't have an actual online thing happening. And then they start right on June 15th and go all the way until we pick up again in the fall.
Yeah. It's, it's actually June 29th to August 14th are the dates.
Isn't it? Or I think it's earlier than that because it's 10 weeks, isn't it?
I don't think so. I think it, I think we had talked about that originally and then decided that the, to give families two weeks to get the technology, give them a break, get the technology back serviced and back in the hands of kids, get their materials out. So it was the 29th and then ending August 14th so that then those staff will be coming back in to start doing their fall work.
And I think one of the things that I've been trying to, to keep in mind as, you know, as we look toward fall, and this is, this is the tight rope that everybody's walking in all areas right now, but I think especially for schools is that we want to go in with as much information as we can. But there's a really good chance that a lot of these decisions will still be made with holes in the information and gaps in the information that we have. And so, you know, we're walking this tight rope of making the best decision that we can, taking it in safety into account and also taking, you know, what's realistically possible for families and for kids into account. And I think that that means that we're going to be looking at, like Sydney said, those decisions are going to come pretty late into the summer, which is a tricky thing for folks as they look ahead toward planning. But I think what that means is that more uncertainty now is going to lead to hopefully a really strong intentional, you know, the best decision that we can make for the kids for when they, they do come back. Okay. Okay. So we had a couple of questions pop up in the chat here just while we're on these topics. And there's a question that says, will the school board be considering an approach for school year 2021 that includes both in-person instruction and remote? I ask because of my understanding that it is likely that there will be peaks and valleys and rates of infection due. Do you anticipate making a decision about the full school year or with the understanding that school for September, October may be different than what's best in January, February? And I think those bring up some great points. And I think one of the pieces that we're balancing is what our role is locally versus what we're going to wind up being told we have to do or we can't do. And I think that what, one of the things that we're waiting for right now is more clarification that will hopefully come out of that committee, that, the governor's task force, about what, how much of these decisions can be made at the local level and how much we're going to be told, here's what you need to do, or here's what you are allowed to do, or here's what you can't do. Anything else that you would add to that, Sydney, or anybody else?
No, just, there's going to be a wide variety of factors that we're going to have to take into consideration on a regular basis. You know, so right now, the task force hasn't outlined what those guidelines are, but some of the guidelines could be very prohibitive for us, you know, depending on how many students can ride a bus. Do we still have students who can get transportation? There are some districts that are really concerned. I don't think this would apply as much in Grantham, but they've said one of the regulations might be that students who are walkers need to have a holding area where they wait for 10 minutes to get to an ambient temperature before somebody checks their temperature going in. And, you know, and who needs to wear a face shield? And who needs to wear a gown working with which students? There's really going to be a lot to consider. And all of those things are going to factor into whether we're open or not, as well as the fact that it could be a governor's decision or it could be a local decision.
Yep, and I think that that speaks somewhat to the other question that came up too about, you know, with, with no confirmed cases in Grantham at this point, if it ends up being at a district level instead of the state. You know, I think that, that that's a conversation that the board will definitely have down the road. And I think there's so many factors that have to go into, you know, how we make that decision. You know, knowing that while I think, you know, we've, we've not even, I think, I know we've been really lucky here as a town, but also knowing that we have families that travel, you know, commute a pretty far distance for work. And we also have, you know, families and students that we know are in some of those high-risk categories. And, you know, so there's a lot of pieces of the puzzle that we have to all put into place. And so it's definitely a decision that I think the more guidance that we can get from the state, the better off we'll be. And then it'll be up to us to sort of figure out how that fits into what matters for us locally and how we can apply those things on the ground here within our schools. There's definitely a funnel that happens where the big decisions get made at the top, you know, national level. Decisions get made at the state level, decisions come to a district and a school board, and then down to the superintendent, and then down to the administration. And so right now, we're still, we haven't gotten enough from that big funnel yet for us to really be in a position to make any kind of moves farther on down that funnel. Okay. Any other updates or discussion for the Summer Extended School Year Fall piece? Thank you, I would just say, you know, for the board, thank you both for the, the work that you guys are doing to identify those students and, you know, create that environment where kids can kind of extend that experience and stay in touch in ways that I think will really help. We appreciate that. And for, for delivering meals. We were talking about that before, but I know different administrators have been a part of helping get the, those meals out to students. And we really appreciate that work too. I have my suspicion that it's pretty fun though.
It is. Heather and I would, I think, both admit it's the highlight of our week.
Yeah, props. Larry's fantastic.
And Larry's going to stick with us through the end of June too. He was more than happy to do that.
Oh, nice. Okay, our next item is the additional payment for, on a contract. And we, this is an action item for the board. So the memo from Sydney is in our packet. And you'll just see that the, and as we were just talking about, remote learning presented extensive special education needs. And so this is a request for payment for additional days to Madeline Crudo Burke. And anything else you want to say about that, Sydney?
Yeah, as you know, last year, we increased the time that Madeline was giving to, for the district. And because we really did have increased to special education needs. So we increased her time and then she and I have been monitoring that time very carefully to make sure that she would stay on track this year. And we were perfectly on track until remote learning hit. And the issues that came up specifically with special education with remote learning were more than extensive. And she has just put in, she's so far beyond her contract days that since she doesn't, she is strictly a contract day unlike other employees. And, you know, doesn't have any vacation or benefits or any of those things. So it's only fair, I think, to compensate her for that extra time. We hope that, you know, next year that we can stay on track again, now that we've gotten a handle on how to work with these services and programming for our special needs student. But she's really done a phenomenal job and her, her time has been extensive.
Okay, questions from the board?
I mean, this just looks like something we, we need to do.
I think we've been fortunate that she has given all of her time to do this. It's probably not enough.
Yeah, I mean, we were thinking, we were discussing everything. Everybody's given more. Everybody has given more during all of this, but it is different when you're just on a per-day contract.
Yeah. And in terms of tracking her hours for next year, have you talked at all about continuing, you know, what you guys had, had done this year up to the point of, you know, where everything sort of went off the rails?
We did, yeah. And I think we can hopefully, you know, not have, you know, put deep to what was in the budget, what we expected. I think the big issue was no one knew when all of this happened, what special education was going to be, what the laws were going to look like. And we would talk to our lawyers, our attorneys about some of our special education cases. And they would tell us that the answer they give us today is going to be different in a week, you know, because everything was changing so rapidly. So now that we have a handle, I think, on what remote learning services and programs look like for special education, we should have a better time keeping on track. And I hope a year from now, I don't eat my words.
So do you need a motion?
We do.
Yeah, unless there's other discussion or, you know, the direction that the board is going here, we would, we do need a motion.
I motion for the board to pay Madeline 10 additional days at the rate of $495 a day for a total of $4,950.
So we have a motion from Denise.
Second.
And a second from Leslie. And so we'll do a roll call. So Christine.
Aye.
Denise.
Aye.
Leslie.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Brittany, aye. All right, and so the motion passes and that is approved. Okay. And thank you to Madeline for doing that extra work and for helping to, you know, to move that process forward. Okay, and so our next agenda item is to discuss the July Board Retreat. So typically, this is the time of year when things slow down and get quiet and we take a month off. And we're not going to do that this year. And so my recommended, and this is a discussion, my recommendation is that the board plans to meet in July. And I think what I would like to decide tonight is what shape we would like that meeting to take. Do we feel like we have enough business that we'll need to look at in July to just have a regular board meeting? Is there a certain area that we'd like to really focus in on and do more in-depth work in for, in the form of a retreat in July? You know, what's, what form should the board meeting look like for July? And I know just off the top of my head, I know we will have, we will have that public hearing for the movie, the money in the trust. And we will have some kind of update on summer, you know, summer programming and then looking ahead to fall. And then we also will most likely have some kind of update for where we are. We will have some kind of update for where we are in the principal search. So those are just off the top of my head, what I know we will have in, in July. And so just let's have a little bit of a discussion on if we think regular board meeting, is there a topic we need to dive more fully into that we can do in July? Or where do we stand?
It does sound like a very full July meeting as it is, so.
That's kind of what I was thinking, because I'm not sure right now we have anything in particular that we need to dive into as far as this summer. Unless I'm not thinking of something.
Unless we can do some brainstorming about the principal search.
But I think we probably need more information about that before we start going down, really. Perhaps, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong on that, but.
Any other thoughts on that? I was just going to see if I could find it. And Sydney, where will we be with the playground project?
So we would be waiting for people to submit for an RFQ. We did have two visitors to the playground to do a site visit, to look around. And I did have six responses to the RFQ saying they were interested in planned on submitting something. So that's actually a really good, healthy response.
Yeah.
But I don't think those would come to you until the September meeting. I think that's what our timeline says.
And we have, go ahead.
No, go ahead Denise.
I'm just trying to remember the meetings are blending. We have no action to take anymore on the food service. We're going to be doing this in-house, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, July may be a good time. I don't know if we necessarily need to do kind of a deep dive into it, but to revisit and do a check on where we are with strategic planning.
I think that's always a healthy thing to do. And I think we all realize that there could be things that are on hold, but I still think it's good to, to go through that to see where we are.
Yep.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Sydney or Brittany, but Sydney, do you have any sense of how the state intends to share the data from the survey? Have you heard anything from, about that?
The data is in big controversy right now.
Shocking.
So I'm not really sure what's going to happen. A I R is the company that they contracted with to crunch the data. And they're hoping to have it very quickly. But there's also been a, a big list of people responding about how the data may potentially be skewed. We have people answering the survey multiple times. We also have a question of anonymity that prevented some people from completing the survey and a wide variety of other reasons. So I'm not really sure how it is all going to shake out. But I believe what the task force is planning on doing is submitting it as one of their reports.
You know, I'm sorry, do you know about, I mean, I know you said possibly more than, people filled it out more than once, but do you know how many they ended up? It was over 45,000, right?
Yeah, it was a really big return, which is good.
It was long, I can't imagine doing it. Took me 20 minutes to the minute.
I know that our hands will, well, nobody knows anything. I'm just thinking of, you know, the next couple of months and thinking about my own anxiety and want, need to plan and knowing that I can't. But I'm just thinking of ways, and it might not be appropriate necessarily for our July meeting, but just thinking of ways for parents to feel sort of in maybe a better, healthier way than that survey, but a way that they feel like they can have their voices heard at least to us. And I, I mean, it could be as simple as like really encouraging them to virtually attend in July. I don't know, but I, I guess I'm just looking for ways to build, keep, continue the community investment and what we're able to do at G B S. It's just really, it's really hard. It's hard for the kids, it's hard for the parents. So just at least having them feel like we're hearing their voices and a good mechanism for that. So I'll just put that there and leave it there, but it's on my mind.
Yeah. Leslie, I think that is a really good point. And I wonder if, I mean, this may be entirely optimistic of me and too hopeful, but I wonder if by July, if we'll have at least a little bit more information from the task force. And maybe at that point, one of the things that we talk about in our update of fall is how, how do we solicit feedback or thoughts from the community? Because I think one of the things that I've struggled with in thinking about, how do we do that successfully for G B S is because it's so wide open and unknown that it feels hard to give feedback on something that you have no idea what is ahead of you, what's in the future. And so maybe if we have a little bit more information, the board can think about in July as part of our check-in, what's, what's that next step for community engagement for us?
I think that's.
And maybe to share a little of my experience in another institution. It might be worthwhile thinking about a way that we, and this sounds very simplistic, but a way that the board has like a living document of sort of like F A Q. I know it sounds very simplistic, but it's been helpful in my other job to have a document that gets updated for different stakeholders so that they can kind of see the latest thinking and decision-making in one place. Like you said, for now, we don't really have a lot of like guidance and frankly, like decisions to make immediately. But that might be a way to feel like transparent and then people have a resource specific to the school, you know, specific to the district and to G B S so that there's maybe beyond attending a meeting that's can be long and filled with other things that they might have a way of feeling like we're sharing the latest information in one place.
I like that idea, wrote it down. I can get started on it and I think that's a, that can be a great thing that we can put together.
Yeah.
I really like that idea too.
I, I just did, I've been gathering women for coffee since restaurants opened. And putting out all the rules has brought so many of them peace because they know, I'm keeping it current. They know what to expect. And I love that idea because it gives parents a place to go, find out what's new. And I'm hopeful, Governor Sununu said less than two weeks ago, he will have a decision by July 1st for planning. So no matter what way it needs to go, I think for the planning point of it, I'm hopeful that he will get us a decision in July.
You mean about reopening?
About what the next step will be, whatever that may look like.
Yeah, and I think one of the, one of the challenges that I, that the, the survey, the, the task force had was, is that it's all, it was, it's all very nebulous. And so is it, are we giving feedback about what we just did? Or is it, are we looking toward what we're going to do? And so I think having more, like that funnel, that more narrow focus on what we're really, you know, what we're headed towards and what kind of information is the most valuable for the board and for the district to have as we move forward can be part of that conversation in, in July.
Yeah, and I'm thinking about, you know, we'll get guidelines from the state, but there are certain things. Actually, now that I'm saying it out loud, I want to return to that demographic study that we had that might help me think a little bit about, you know, different income brackets. I'm just really occupied in my thoughts with equity, and I mean that like across the board. It's kind of my obsession when I think about the fall of the ways that families are or not equipped for what we've just been through and, and more, many more months to come perhaps. So those are some of the things that are really on my mind and ways for families who want to say this is really hard, because that's hard to say in public. I'll even, like, it's even hard for me to say that it's hard. So I'm just thinking about ways that families can be like, their voices can be heard and represented. And also that they can pull information from us and feel like informed as best they can with the big proviso that like things change day to day. Sounds like we've got some good plans.
Okay, so we will plan for July to have the format of a regular board meeting, but we'll make sure that we have a focus to our work for that night of looking at, how are we going to move forward? You know, what, what, what are our next steps? And then how will we make sure that this is a process that's engaging the community in a meaningful way? Okay. All right, anything else on, on, before we move off of the July meeting? Okay, our last agenda item sort of flows nicely into this. The New Hampshire School Board Association has put a call out a couple of times for if boards would like to provide them with a letter or a statement that they can then compile and pass on to the, I don't remember what all the words are, but the S T R R T, Start Task Force. And so I wanted to bring it up to the board to see if that's something that we feel compelled or that we feel like we, we have information that we would like to share. And we can funnel that through. And we can funnel that through, you know, the New Hampshire School Board Association has offered to be a conduit for those letters and that information. They're going and meeting with a variety of the, you know, the working groups that are within the task force. So they may know kind of the best groups to, to channel that information to. So I wanted to open up a discussion for the board on if we would like to submit a letter to that committee, to that, to the task force, and if so, what's the scope or the message?
This is the task force, is this the same task force that's looking at reopening the schools?
So real, their, their charge is reopening and redesigning.
I think the social emotional part, I think everyone I've talked to, that has been their biggest battle. It's, it's a huge missing piece with this, and not just the children, adults, educators, everyone. I, I think it's a huge missing piece, and if we have to do this again in the fall, something's gotta give. Kids are, kids, adults, everyone's gonna fall apart, we, we gotta change something.
I, I agree, Jody, and I think the technology part is already in place and can be expanded on, but this is an area that's in constant need of addressing, and it isn't getting met as well as it could be.
Yeah, I, I think, I agree with both of you, and one of my biggest concerns, to be more specific, about the equity thing that I brought up before, there are issues of equity access, there are issues of educational access. But I'm, I'm really, every day that goes by, I'm more and more worried about kids who are neglected, who the parents are not equipped for what's happening psychologically, educationally, financially. And every day that goes by that we're isolated from each other. I'm just, I am, I'm fearful of what the fall will bring, and I think about little kids who have nope, they really don't have protections right now. And so I think if I had to stand in front of a task force and boil down my primary concern, I have concerns for every member of our community in different ways, but, you know, at the end of the day, I think our job as governors of the district is, you know, governance and governors is looking out for the kids in our community, it very much concerns me. I don't, there's no clear path forward, but I'm increasingly preoccupied with that idea.
Yeah, I, I see just in our neighborhood, kids who can't play with their friends. And that's just such an important need in their development. How can we meet this in, in this isolation period? I mean, I feel the anxiety because I can't see my family. I think the kids, you know, this is, this is gonna take away from their educational experiences if we can't support it better.
One of the things that, that I think in Jody's initial question and then listening to what you guys have said brings up for me is, I, I would, I would be in favor of us sending a letter to this task force, and I would really like, one of the pieces that I think I would emphasize is emphasizing their work on reopening. I think if they have charged themselves with reopening and redesign, redesign is a phenomenally large task, and I would be, it would be a really big shame if the focus of how to best and most safely reopen our schools gets overshadowed by a conversation about how to redesign our schools. My priority right now is to get our school open, and then we can look at how can we make it even better than it is? And so in that terms of the spectrum of how much time to spend talking about reopening our schools versus how much time to spend redesigning our schools, I would be in favor of, you know, 98% of their energy going to getting our schools open and 2% going to redesigning them at this point. And I think that that's, you know, that's a perspective that our school, I have the privilege to say in our district because our school is doing well, and I know that there are districts that would like to see more redesign happen, but as long as our schools are closed, I don't know how we can meaningfully redesign them.
Yeah, and Brittany, to that point, I think one of my biggest concerns is that a task force like that focus really, really dig deep into the best information they can possibly find around kids and the health outcomes related to kids and what we do and do not know about, are they carriers? Are they, I mean, we don't have to be this specific in the letter, but I'm just conveying. Because there's a tendency to get really, there's such a wide range of findings and information, and I would really like to trust that they're looking really closely at what data we do and do not know about kids and effects and transmission and that sort of thing. Because I feel like we know a lot about adults, but there's emerging information, and it can be, like you said, it can be politicized and I think a little obscured by other things.
I also want to say that, I think Heather and Will agree with me that we still talk to other administrators around the state who have not really done a lot of distance learning because they haven't been able to. Their kids, they haven't been able to provide devices or internet access. Parents are still essential workers and aren't home, and so they just couldn't make it work. There, in terms of equity, there really are a lot of kids who have not had a school experience since March 15th, which is a tragedy. And then we put, I mean, we've been very fortunate in Grantham because of what we could do and because of our real collaboration with families and our amazing teachers and everybody on our staff who would do anything to make this happen. But when we think of the number of kids who might not have had anything, not just academics, but that's gonna make their social emotional concerns even larger if they don't even have the stability of academics at that point.
Kind of go into what Brittany and Leslie just said, too. You know, when I was listening to NPR the other morning, and they were talking about some of the ideas, like keeping kids in one classroom, well, that might be ideal for our younger ones, but what about our older kids? How would that work in middle school and high school? I mean, they're still our kids, like, I just think the whole realm of it is, I want to make sure that it's, they're, they're not just thinking about what looks good on paper, but what actually works with children.
Yeah, I wondered how they're gonna do that, the kids stay in the class if they're in high school and they're all taking different courses.
I know, Lillian said that to me, she's like, I don't understand, like, what would happen during Spanish? We would just be like the French corner, the Spanish corner, like, she's like, how'd this work? I don't know.
I think the other thing I would wanna add is, I think whatever guidelines this task force comes out with, they need to give local districts a lot of flexibility in figuring out what's gonna work best for them.
Agreed.
If they try to do some kind of sweeping statewide, you know, requirements, I, I don't think that's gonna work well.
I, I, just to piggyback on that, Christina, I totally agree because having taught in the North Country, in Arle and in Mylan and in Berlin, where the broadband access isn't even there, I don't even know what they're dealing with right now. How could it be equitable across our state? And, and it's not just there, but that's, that's my, you know, geographical reference. I'm sure you could go a couple towns away from here and find a very similar situation.
And just to loop, that brings me full circle to what Jody said in the very first place. It cuts across socioeconomic status, people's ability to cope with what's happening. And so, you know, I think that kind of brings it to me, like bubbles it down to prioritizing what's best for our state short and long term. And because we've managed to statewide, now granted, there are a lot of variations, but you know, New Hampshire has kept things relatively manageable. I, I just hope that we can really think about the long-term effects on the kids, that's, I'm obsessed with it. So I, and I think, and frankly, the adults, too, we alluded to that, but it doesn't even really so much matter to me. I mean, socioeconomic status matters, but you know, you think about, you can be rich and not be able to cope with what's happening. And you can be poor and doing a great job, but that's my point. There's no way to sort and filter and know who's getting more of an effect or less because it cuts across all those lines. So I think we're all saying the same thing, but it's hard.
Brittany, would you be the one writing the statements, or would Sydney write it?
So I would be happy to, I, I would say I would probably like to co-write it.
That was so nicely said.
Co-write it, either with, with another, you know, another one of the, of you all, of one of the board members or with Sydney. I mean, I would like to kind of get some of my initial thoughts and these, you know, what everybody, I wrote down what everybody shared here, and then send it out to the board for just a final, you know, I think we could probably do just an email, you know, approval, you know, by email before it's sent in.
Is there a deadline for it? I'm sorry, my, that might have been somewhere.
No, so they, I actually looked back and they haven't given a deadline. I think that they have been, or they're, and have been and are planning to be pretty active at each of the individual, like those, you know, there's the task force, and then there's like the working groups within the task force. And I think they're pretty active within all of those, and I think they're, you know, presenting things in that format, and then it's just also passing letters along as they come into the full task force and then also individual people. So there hasn't been a deadline.
I think it's a good starting point, I think there's interest in submitting.
Okay, all right. I'll put something together, Sydney, would, do you want to be my writing partner for that, or? We didn't.
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and then, and so we'll get something together and then we'll send it out before we submit it. Okay, thank you all, I appreciate that. And that is the end of our, oh, and just as a reminder, and I know the board probably remembers this, but also for the folks that are, you know, for the public that are watching, most of, I think all of the work that this committee is doing, either the full task force or those individual committee groups, they are holding their sessions virtually, so you can sign up to be able to go and watch those. So if there's a particular, you know, they have it broken down kind of by interest area. If there's a particular one that folks are interested in, you can find that schedule, and then, you know, so folks can go in and be a part of or watch those meetings individually, too.
Yeah, I'll just add a little note that you want to try and get on quickly because they cap out at 1,000, and they regularly go over 1,000, you know, so you, you really have to try and be the, the early bird there.
Right. Okay, so our next item is the principal's report.
So I think a lot of what I put in my report, we've talked about in terms of ESY and end of the year events. So I wanted to share a piece of writing from a student today. So in fourth grade, they do this project where they choose a word that is sort of their intention, and they make bracelets with the word. And a young man wrote a beautiful piece today, and he's not letting me share his name. However, he is gonna let me share, I'm still working on, can I share his name later? He said I could share it in the family letter, and I thought it would, you would appreciate it. Courage, courage is the word I chose. It was silently said to everyone at this time, telling them they could do it no matter what had happened. It was said to everyone who works at the hospital that had, that had the courage to help the sick while putting themselves in danger. It was said to all the students who had to do everything online. It was said to best friends, telling them not to, no matter how badly they wanted to. But most of all, it was said to the sick to keep, to keep fighting through it. All these things involved courage.
This is fourth grade?
That's so thoughtful.
Yeah.
Yes.
So when we're talking about social emotional, there it is.
Get the tissues, would you?
I know.
It was beautiful.
Yeah. Thank you for sharing that with us.
Yes, that's, that's good to hear, some student work.
And as you work on getting to share the name, tell the student that, thank you, too. Pass that, pass our appreciation for that on.
Thanks.
I just had one question about your report, how many kids have registered for kindergarten?
Oh, um, let's, let me, I, I'm trying to think of a number right off the top of my head. It's a little less than last year.
Registered for what, Jody? I'm sorry, I missed that. Oh, kindergarten, thank you.
Uh, okay, so let's see, we have 10, 28, 32, 33.
Wow.
And there'll probably still be more.
Yeah, you know, we're, it's interesting to do registrations, new registrations during this time. People are moving, they're still contacting us, so we do have a number of new kids enroll in for next year. We may, you know, we certainly could get a few more. And we also, right now, we have, we've maxed out our four-year-old program with 16 and seven three-year-olds. So some, some bigger numbers coming in.
Do we have a waiting list for the four-year-olds, or do we just stop and max them out?
So what we talked about was if we get any more fours, because the three group is small, we could do a combination three-four, we talked about how that could look. So we could have, we could make some space there. It just, it would be a two-day program as opposed to a three-day program if anybody else added on now.
So we're still gonna try and find ways to accommodate everybody. It might not just be in that exact year program, but you know, we don't want to turn anybody away. We're gonna see if we can figure out something for every kid.
Yeah, Jen Coto was trying to convince me that she could take them all in the, like, if you can just take them all, it would be fine. Don't worry, I can do it. So yes, I mean, we're delighted to have them.
Thank you.
And also, it might be interesting for you to know that all of our threes, except for one who moved, will be returning to the four-year-old.
Oh. So yay. Okay, any other questions about the principal's report?
Heather, I'm looking at the calendar of the end of the year. Are those links for the talent show in the sixth grade posted on the school page, or where can we find?
Those are Zoom, so if you just click on that link, it will open up a Zoom, the Zoom event. But they are, they are, I think they're listed on the website as well, but you're welcome to click on that link and join us if you'd like.
Okay, does it give the times for those events on the website? Okay.
They're both on Thursday of the week, one's at two, one's at seven. And I'm really pleased with how the sixth grade celebration came out. Ian Pollard has been really instrumental in helping the sixth grade teachers to get that put together, and the sixth grade teachers have done a great job, of course, with preparing the kids for that sixth grade celebration. And they also did a virtual nature's classroom this week, and last night they had a campfire. So they're doing everything they can to try to, you know, make happy experiences for the kids.
Nice.
Okay, so we'll move on to the superintendent report.
I'll just zip it, my report is written, but just with two quick additions, where we've been, a lot of our planning has been for the drop-off pickup situation that is similar to when we first sent home supplies. So we've been busy getting things ready so that we can send all of our students home with, with things that they can do over the summer, whether they're in our summer program or not. So we're gonna, we're gonna be doing that exchange on the 11th and a rain date of the 12th. And then the other thing is, I just wanted to say I'm very excited because on Thursday, I will be doing via Zoom, not, I haven't done this before, but on Thursday, I'll be doing via Zoom the Lebanon High School Awards Ceremony where we'll be giving out our, the Grantham Awards. And so the, Bonnie Robinson has done an amazing job putting that whole thing together with the script and everything. It's just all the work that went into making that happen for those kids up there is just incredible. So I will let you know how it goes, but it should be a fun time.
And is it open to the public, this one, or is it just being? And is it open to the public, this one, or is it just being put together?
So this is when we video it, this is when we put it together, um, Thursday, and I'm not exactly sure when they're airing it. But, you know, they'll, they'll make it available for everybody to watch.
Do you have need for any more pairs of hands with the, um, collecting and redistributing the materials?
I think under normal circumstances, I would say yes, but right now, what we're saying is that if you don't absolutely have to be there, we would prefer, we're even saying that to our own staff, is that if you, I mean, everybody wants to see the kids, we know that, and we figured out a way to make that happen with correct social distancing. But, you know, when we're rotating through the school and packing things up, if people don't need to be there, we are asking them in the very nicest way possible to, to stay away with, with the biggest of hearts and concern. And that's it for me, unless you have any questions about my report.
Thank you.
I appreciate the follow-up on that, the, um, para educator.
Oh, yeah.
Um, yeah.
Yep, so. And I, I think that's, you know, it sounds really reasonable, and especially not knowing what the needs will be there.
Yeah. Yeah, our time study revealed that we could probably reduce one para educator, but we also have absolutely no idea the needs that kids are gonna come back with. So this is just absolutely not the right time to make that reduction. Um, it may happen again in the future, but again, we'll have to reassess everything a year from now. But we, we can't afford to lose that position, given the fact that there could be a lot of increased needs when kids return.
Yeah.
Yeah. That sounded wise.
Okay, any other comments or questions for the superintendent report? Okay, so our next item is the consent agenda, and I don't believe we got the trustees of the trust fund report. Did we see, did anyone happen to see that come in?
Yeah, I noticed that that was not there.
Yeah, and I know there was, it was gonna come by email, and there was a question of if it hadn't come by tonight, then we would amend it to remove that.
Yeah, I didn't see it come through.
Okay, that's what I thought. Any other, um, amend, you know, things to amend or correct or change in the consent agenda?
Oh, I just had a question about, you know, the, um, budget reports, general fund revenue about the state education tax.
Yep, that's the final payment, which just hasn't come from the town yet, so.
Oh, okay.
So when we finally get that last payment from the town, that will all balance out.
Oh, okay. I just hadn't seen that before, and I wondered why there was that amount that looked.
It looks shocking. I, I, that looked something out at me too, but it's just that we're just waiting for the,
Oh, okay.
To have our payment scheduled.
Glad I asked.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll need to amend the consent agenda to remove the trustees of the trust fund report. Any other changes or amendments to the consent agenda? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a second from Christine and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye, and we'll do a roll call. So Jody?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Brittany, aye. So the consent agenda is approved as amended, and I'm gonna open it up just one last time, um, for public comment. If there's any other comments from the public, um, feel free to use the Q and A or the chat feature. It's just looking, I think, everyone, we don't have any, we still don't have anybody by phone, so. Any other questions or comments from the public at this point?
It's a nice thank you to the board for your hard work. I agree. I echo the thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was nice.
Okay, so, um, we are actually going to recess the public meeting again. The board has a little bit of non-public work to finish up. Um, so we will be returning to our non-public session that was opened at 5:30. Um, and what this means is that we are recessing this public session, and we will come back to it later on to officially adjourn the meeting. Um, at this point, we don't anticipate there being any, um, additional business that the board would have to attend to at that public session, but if folks would like to come back for the formal adjournment of the public meeting, um, we will give a time that we will be back to do that. And that public meeting will resume at the same length that you used to get into this meeting, and we will, um, do the formal adjournment there, but we are going to recess this public meeting and resume our non-public. So I think, I want to say, give ourselves, what do we think, 15 or 20 minutes? People think for the board?
Twenty, twenty, twenty.
Twenty?
Twenty.
Okay, so let's say, let's do 10 after eight. Okay, so the public meeting will resume at 10 after eight, so if anyone would like to come back into the public meeting, it will, we will be back in here at, at 8:10. Um, but in the meantime, we're, we really appreciate folks in the community still engaging with the board in this format and coming to, uh, you know, our meetings via Zoom. I think we've actually had more attendance at our school board meetings, being able to do them this way than we have had in public. So it's kind of nice to be able to have more, um, community seeing all of the fun and excitement that happens at our meetings. Um, so thank you all, and we will come back into public session at 8:10.